Good evening, everyone. Calling to order, the Town of Hingham Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 6th, 2019, March 13th, 2019, March 20th, 2019, March 21st, 2019, and March 26th, 2019.
Twenty-second.
I will, uh, I will second. There were two meetings. I was not present for the meeting on the 13th, which was a water subcommittee.
Just I gotta break out the glass.
And, uh...
No, you're right. She's wrong.
I was not, I think that, that was the only one I was not present. I just don't typically vote those minutes.
So we have March 6th, 13th, 20th, 21st, and 22nd.
I'll second everything but the 13th. I'm gonna abstain from the 13th, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With respect to March 13th, who have a second?
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on items on the agenda. I'm looking up Mr. O'Hair. Apologize for the other night. I don't see your hand up, so we're gonna continue on. Kelly Miller Circus. Join us at the table, please, Mr. Dempsey and Ms. Young.
No, I'm just a layman.
Okay, alright.
Hi, Paul. Good evening.
What do you got?
Thanks for having me.
Okay.
My name is Stephen Dempsey, lifelong resident here. Tonight as a member of the Hingham Historical Commission. I'm here to talk about a concept, just a concept, of bringing the Kelly Miller Circus to the town as a fundraiser for the Preservation Projects Fund. Much of the funding for the projects that the Hingham Historical Commission sponsors comes from the Preservation Projects Fund, or PPF. Projects such as the maintenance of the Victory statue at the harbor, more commonly known as the Iron Horse. The Lincoln statue at Fountain Square are funded by the PPF. The purchase and installation of the Ahm's House signs and various bridge signs around town is funded by the PPF, and also significant purchases such as the John Richardson Collection, which is jointly owned by the Historical Commission and the Society, Hingham Historical Society. They're funded by the PPF. As you guys know, it's a finite account funded primarily by donations. So for the past several months, the Historical Commission has been discussing different fundraising ideas to replenish the PPF. So Hingham has a rich history of hosting the circus. As early as 1869, the New York Circus came to Hingham and the tents were set up at the Agricultural Hall Fairgrounds, the site of today's public library. The circus continued to come to the fairgrounds into the early 1900s. I don't know if the camera can see this, but this photo from the Richardson Collection of circus animals walking toward the fairgrounds in the front of 21 Levitt Street was taken in 1885.
No elephants, though. Sorry. Go ahead.
Don't worry about the elephants. This history inspired me to explore the possibilities of bringing the Kelly Miller Circus, an animal-free circus, to Hingham. The circus will have a real big top and two shows per evening for two nights. The shows consist of human acts only, such as jugglers, clowns, aerial acrobats, tightrope, and more. And I've been told by town officials from other Massachusetts communities that have sponsored the Kelly Miller Circus, that setting up the big top is an event in itself. So there's no doubt that Hingham loves its family-friendly events, and I met with various departments last week to inquire about the needs of public safety, building, planning, school, health, and sanitation, and conservation. The middle school seems to be the most suitable site to consider, and I'm here tonight to formally inform this office of my idea. The Historical Commission met last night, and we decided that more information is needed, and I'd like to continue this conversation after town meeting. Moving forward, I'll work with this office and Tom and Michelle throughout the process of making any decisions, and in the meantime, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from my colleagues or comments generally?
Well, first, Steve, you know, you mentioned the, um, the fund support of signage around town, and I know that you have had a huge hand in developing the bridge signs and the Ahm's signs, and they're noticeable around town, and I just think it's been a great addition to pointing out our historic legacy as we drive around town. So I just wanted to mention that again, because I remember you were here before us several months ago with one of the signs, and then it's up, and it looks, they're attractive and informative, so I appreciate that. I mean, it looks like a lot of fun. I feel like it is one of those kind of fundraising events that the devil's gonna be in the details. So I commend the Historical Commission for continuing to evaluate, you know, the specifics of the proposal with the circus, as well as, and, you know, I think you're out in front of this, as well as identifying those boards and commissions within town government, as well as volunteer boards and commissions that need to be involved in, you know, making this a successful event, both from a fundraising perspective, as well as from, you know, a public, a public participant perspective. So, um, so you think the middle school makes the most sense in terms of outdoor space and parking and all that sort of thing?
Early discussions indicate that.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, I appreciate you, you know, stopping by to make, to inform us of this, and, you know, I would assume that with Tom's help and Michelle's help, you know, that we could run through the, all the legalities that would, I think, again, make this a successful event.
They would, they would be excited to come this summer, but it, it may not, you know, happen at all this summer. It may not happen all, maybe 2020. Let's see.
And are there any other specific requests that you would have of this board or the town in terms of being able to, to hold this event?
Uh, I'm not sure yet. As I said, I met with the other various boards, and I didn't see any giant red flags, but it's, it's really too early to, to know what we may need in total.
Okay. And I think the, you know, the school department has a procedure for, you know, going through their facilities, so you'll need to coordinate with them as well, but it, it sounds like, it sounds like a fun event, and I appreciate your thinking of not only events that, that families can do in Hingham, but things that are a little bit different, too.
One thing I didn't mention that is very important, it will be alcohol-free.
Do we have any permitting requirements for anything like this, like...
Yeah, so that's part of the review.
Outdoor entertainment?
It's part of the review that Steve and I will do as we dig in a little bit deeper. We've talked to the fire chief and the police chief, and he's reached out to the school department, so he's done some of that initial review, but we'll, we'll talk to the second floor, see what needs to be done. And some, so much of it depends, you know, I laugh about the elephants, but that, that adds another layer of permitting requirements. So, anyway, like Steve said, it's really early in the process, just wanna socialize the concept.
You know, I would just also add that while this, this might be happening during the summer, you know, just looking through at some of the sort of what the circus provides, what they need, this may also be an opportunity to ask for, you know, high school students who need community service hours, scouting troops, but, you know, I, I think that as you're thinking about the work and things that have to get done, you know, we'd be happy to connect you with different civic organizations that could, you know, provide, provide some help if you, if that, if that would be helpful.
It probably will. Thank you.
I like the idea because it, to me, it harkens back to a different time, and to gather the community in a pleasurable undertaking is something that I can remember my own experience with the 350th, and that was just such a good community event that I still remember fondly, even now. And I think that the poster, to the extent that it could be modified to incorporate the town in it, would be a good, um, a good item to sell as memorabilia, so that people sitting here 50 years from now can enjoy it. Thank you for doing this, Steve.
The only, the only, you're welcome. The only trace of circus I've been able to find, except for this whole photo, is people's memories, and everybody has a smile when they talk about it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
More.
Thanks, Steve. Come on.
Alright. Okay, next on the agenda, introduction of a Water Company acquisition transition team and preliminary transition plan. Hey, gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us here tonight. Tom, I'd you for, uh, introductions.
Sure. Sure. So I'll introduce Bob Gollidge and Andy Gottlieb as Gollidge Strategies. They, I've spoken of them in the past in this discussion around the potential acquisition of the Water Company. Gollidge Strategies has been engaged to assist us in the, in the transition process, well, the would-be transition process in the event of a, of an acquisition. So to that end, I think I'll ask both Andrew and Bob to, to walk through some of their, some of their qualifications for, for what we're asking them to do.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Thank you, members of the board. My name's Bob Gollidge, and I've been doing environmental consulting now for about 10 years. I'm gonna reveal how long I've been at this, but I started at DEP under the Dukakis administration, and I left after the Romney administration, so I was there through, you know, several governor's terms. Held a variety of different positions while I was at DEP, both from a policy perspective and an operations perspective. Started in the Wetlands and Waterways Program, then was Chief of Staff for the department for three years or so. Ran the Central Regional Office in Worcester, which encompasses a pretty large section of the state, including major portions of the Quavon Reservoir watershed. And then the last four years of the department, when I was with the state, I was Commissioner of DEP, and, and then, you know, the last portion, just under a year, was Secretary of Environmental Affairs. So I've, I've dealt with a whole range of water supply issues, water supply protection issues, and on the operations side, when I was Regional Director in Worcester. I'm gonna say a couple words about Andrew, and then I'll let him fill in the blanks. Andrew and I were, were at DEP together almost the exact amount of time. Andrew also held several different positions. Some people like to joke that we couldn't keep a job because we always were jumping around, taking on new and added responsibilities, but Andrew was instrumental, having spent time working as a legislative aide, and then at DEP getting the Water Management Act program up and running through all the twists and turns of that. He oversaw the implementation of the State Revolving Fund program, which I'm sure is of considerable interest to, to Hingham as you're talking about doing the acquisition, given the potential for grants for some planning, but then also the SRF program has, you know, significant low-interest loans where they can be helpful. So Andrew knows, knows that program in and out, and then he did several stints when I was Commissioner, helping on special projects. So again, a real strategic thinker and problem solver, and then the last part of his tenure with the state was with the Office of Community Development, which oversaw both transportation and the environmental agency, so a vast group of experience. He also has municipal experience, being a select board member, and a fair amount of nonprofit experience. So after, you know, two-plus decades of experience in the environmental arena, I did something a little bit different. I left state service and left the country for a couple of years, not because I had done anything wrong, but had a great opportunity to move overseas, and I ran the Peace Corps in Ghana for a couple of years, which was another great experience. So I saw water supply at a very, very local level when I was in Ghana, and then, as I say, since returning, for the last 10 years, have been doing environmental consulting on large and complicated projects, but also this is the type of effort that I think really plays to both of our strengths, which is, you know, looking at things, looking at the work that's been done to date, looking at the potential challenges ahead, and then giving some advice to the town as they move forward. So Andrew, you can fill in the blanks.
Bob actually covered it well. The collector mentioned, we actually started at DEP the same day.
Did you?
In 1988, so we've been at this together for a while. But as you said, yeah, I really cut my teeth at DEP in the water supply program, and so that's where a lot of my knowledge comes from, sort of some of the in-depth understanding of the way those programs are structured, and I think we both have a pretty good understanding about DEP's perspective on the world, how they view municipal public water supply operations and the right way to help you frame your position with them in a way that makes it easier for them to help you succeed in what you're trying to do. And I also think that, you know, I sit on your side of the table a couple nights a month, and, you know, understand, understand and appreciate, I have the same personality defect. Understand and appreciate the challenges of a big undertaking like this. You know, what you're doing is, is worthwhile. It's difficult, but it's a path other communities have followed and succeeded at, and I think that you're well-positioned to, to do the same, and we're here to try and help as best we can.
Thank you both, gentlemen. We really do appreciate your participation in this effort. Tom, where...
Yes, I think the, the best course of action is probably to ask Bob and Andy to walk us through our preliminary transition plan, and, and the different elements that, that are involved.
Where's yours, gentlemen?
Okay, thank you. So I'll, I'll do a brief overview of what we've, what we've been up to for the past almost two months, and then, and then Andrew can walk through some of the nitty-gritty in terms of the, the water supply issues with DEP. So I guess I would take a step back, and so we were brought on board to take a look at all the work that, that not only the select board, but the various advisory committees have done to date, and I think that that, I would sum it up by saying, the town should, should have great confidence in the work that's taken place to date. You know, Andrew and I have reviewed a lot of the materials. I've looked at some, at the analysis, I've looked at some of the criticisms where, where, you know, some, some folks on the opposition have tried to, you know, poke holes in, in this effort, and I have actually not seen this level of effort occurred in other communities. So I think the town and the, the host of people who have dedicated literally thousands of hours of time should be very, you folks should be very proud of that effort and feel great confidence, because I think the work done to date has been thorough and professional, and has positioned the town quite, quite well. Another thing that's also important to, to underscore here is the town's efforts at looking at both the short term and the long term, and I think it's, it's oftentimes difficult to get our minds around looking over the long haul, and yet, in fact, water supply protection is exactly what you have to do, not only to ensure that, you know, the infrastructure is kept up and improved on the appropriate schedule, but the protection efforts that are needed to ensure the long-term water quantity and quality issues that are just critical to the public water supply delivery, literally over generations. And in this day and age, when it's, with the, you know, the social media and, and all that we have barraging us, I think oftentimes we look at the very short term. So, so again, I, I think that the, the effort that the town has undertaken to look at both the short term and, and long-term challenges is, is commendable. A couple of other sort of highlights is that as, as we've looked at these materials and, and the plans that have been being debated now for quite some time, we, we thought and think it's been important to engage a number of different public entities. So we've started that process, working with, with Tom and, and counsel, that, and there's been, you know, some interactions with the Attorney General's Office, with Mass DEP, and also with Secretary Beaton's office at the secretary level of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Again, the short takeaway is that what's being contemplated here is actually what occurs in a vast majority of communities throughout the Commonwealth. It's not necessarily a common, everyday occurrence, because, again, a vast majority of public water supply systems are actually owned and managed by municipalities as we speak, taking aside the, I believe it's 46 communities that are serves, served by MWRA, but again, that's a public agency. So I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew in a second, but I guess the, the short story, and, and we're here to answer whatever questions folks have, both on the board and, and members of the audience, but the due diligence that has both occurred on the financial end, but on the planning end, is very impressive. There are some specific steps that are gonna need to occur during a transition, should town meeting vote to move forward with the, the acquisition, but in, in some respects, for a community to manage and control its water supply, you're actually, you know, controlling your destiny, and, you know, some might, might, might ask, can we afford to do this? The financials, I think, clearly indicate that over the, the period analyzed, the town actually can afford to save some significant dollars and allow some of that to be reinvested. But I would submit, in many, in many ways, the town can't afford not to move forward with this in order to ensure both a, a long-term water quality and quantity for its residents and, and all folks being serviced. So Andrew, I'll let you, again, fill in some of the blanks.
Okay.
And all the questions.
So one of the things we've been looking at is, you know, the process questions associated with what happens after a successful vote by town meeting, and really been trying to engage DEP in that conversation to make sure that their understanding of the town's intentions, that whatever formal process steps need to happen in order for an orderly transition from a regulatory perspective can take place, and to open and then maintain the lines of communication between regulators and the town. And I think everybody, the only thing that everybody can involve can agree on is that maintaining, you know, good quality water to all customers within the service area is both your long-term goal, but clearly an important thing during the transition period. And from the regulatory, regulator's perspective, obviously their concern is to make sure that the water quality that's being delivered continues to meet the drinking water standards, and that's gonna be first and foremost their primary issue. So, you know, this is not unprecedented, but not something that happens every day. So unlike many things that happen in the regulatory side, especially in the drinking water world, there isn't a form for this. So we've talked a little bit about ensuring that the town, the DEP get proper notice of the proposed transition, and recognition of the fact that there will be a period of time, post-vote, before the town takes full control and ownership of the system, and therefore providing a notice that town meeting has voted this transaction, that there will be a closing and transfer of ownership, but a date certain to be set in the future, and an acknowledgement on both parties' part that that transition and transaction's gonna occur, and a request for the transfer at the time of closing of a couple of important things from DEP to the town of Hingham. One would be transfer of the drinking water ID number, which then puts you in the system as the, as a regulated entity. And then also importantly for this, there is a form, transfer of the Water Management Act water rights to the town. It's very important that that happen as part of the closing process to ensure that you're gaining the regulatory right to the water that you're purchasing is incorporated into the purchase price. There's a number of elements in a business plan the DEP expects from any public water supplier, regardless of the size, service area, or ownership structure, that you will need to adopt. You can and probably should, during this transition period, just continue on with that which was, been provided and operated by the current owner. You will have the opportunity in the future, after your initial transition, to make changes to those planning documents, and there's a number of different elements associated with it, and it's a lengthy list. You know, you have contingencies, you have emergency response plan, you have a cross-connection control plan, you have a capital infrastructure plan, an asset management plan, wellhead and source protection plans, certified operator staffing plan, sampling program, maintenance plan, standard operating procedures, and then one thing that you'll need to adopt that doesn't currently exist in its current form because it's privately owned are rules and regulations governing the operation of a water system from the municipal perspective, which will lay out all the rules and requirements that you have for somebody who's looking to interact with your system, connections, and what the engineering standards and design standards that you'll hold people to, and also, very importantly, your rates and charges, because as the public entity in charge, you would become the entity that sets rates and charges. The need for the separate DPU process falls away because it would not, in that instance, be a private operator. So there's a number of elements that need to happen. They don't have to be in place on April 22nd or April 23rd. You have time, you can continue on leaving in place what is currently in place, and ensuring that those procedures and policies and plans are being followed, but you will have an opportunity as an operator on an ongoing basis to tweak, improve, and modify those plans as you see it meets the needs of your service population and the communities that you're serving. So it's important to know what those things are. It's also important to realize that you can continue on as the responsible entity moving forward post, the day after the town meeting, town meeting vote moves forward. So those are all things that, you know, will collectively be in a position to help give you some guidance on, or to help you acquire the services that you need in order to be able to get the expertise on the specific ones associated with each one of these elements. And I think it's important that, to date, the regulatory folks at the Southeast Region understand where you are and how you would be using what is already in place, so that they have an understanding of your situation, and you can move on, on, under those circumstances. So, you know, there'll be a number of things that, that you need to, to work on, it's gonna be a busy period, but I think that it will allow you to assure your customers, the customers in, in other parts of their system that are not within the Town of Hingham, that plans are in place, that do continue to assure the quality of the water that's being delivered to them, and in addition, you know, I think that you can expect a fair bit of support and encouragement in your endeavors should that town meeting go the way you want it to, from the regulatory agency, to help facilitate an orderly transition for you. Upon the closing, whenever that might be in the future, you then become the owner, the fully responsible entity, and the regulated public water supplier at that point, and are subject to and expected to comply with all the rules and regulations of DEP that apply to your system. I would encourage you to think, though, that while that's a big undertaking and an important responsibility, that the expectation be that you use this transition period to put out requests for proposals for a long-term operator for your system, and when, and there are a number of reputable companies out there. There are five significant companies doing business as a... There are five significant companies doing business as a contract operator for municipally-owned public water systems in the Southeast Region alone. So there's a great degree of familiarity from the regulatory folks with these entities as operators. So you'll have a big responsibility. There are suitable, qualified contract operators out there who will be able to, once you select one during this transition period upon the closing and taking full control of the system, will be able to walk you through both some of the revisions that you might want to make as a public entity, but also are well familiar with the regulatory standards and best practices of the industry in order to ensure that you can assure your customers and residents that your ability to comply with the drinking water regulations will be a high one, and you'll be able to provide a high-quality service. So I think we're providing some evaluation of some different models and RFPs for contract operator solicitation that we would recommend to you. You initiate promptly after the town meeting vote. People that are in that business, or any business, putting together a responsive proposal to a complex RFP takes a significant investment. I think that the market will be looking to make sure that this transaction has and will take place, and you're in a better position to attract the best proposals that you can get by waiting till you have an affirmative town meeting vote, because it takes the speculation out of it. So if I'm a contract operator, I'm not sure I'm going to put in the marketing resources and the investment and the due diligence that's necessary to give you a very good proposal if I don't know if town meeting is going to proceed with the vote. So I think we'll be working with you to give you a very strong RFP for your consideration. And should things go the way that you would like them to, we recommend that you release that shortly thereafter. And I think you have time in which to do that, and leave yourself in a good position to complete that transaction prior to when your expected closing might be. And then the last thing I want to touch on Bob mentioned is, one of the opportunities that exists for you going forward, to the extent you're looking at, and I think you will from the conversations I've had with Tom and others, is that there's a good opportunity for substantial financial assistance come from the Commonwealth through the state revolving loan fund program. There's a low-interest program, 2% loan program, for public water suppliers that you will be able to apply for as early as this coming cycle. So the system runs, DEP does an annual solicitation, both on the water and wastewater side, in the waterside. They put out somewhere in the order of $100 to $150 million of financial assistance in the form of 2% loans to municipalities doing significant infrastructure, public health improvement, long-term maintenance that improves the performance of a system. They provide that funding to municipalities. It runs on a calendar year basis. You'll actually be entering this at a reasonably good time. Typically, this solicitation will go out in the late spring to early summer, inviting towns to propose projects that they would want to undertake in the following calendar year. So if you were to apply this year, it would be from money and financial assistance that becomes available on January 1st-ish 2020, with the intention being that you initiate your project during the upcoming calendar year. So as Bob mentioned, as managing the program at the time has expanded to include the drinking water program, not to say that there haven't been tweaks in some of the details of the rules in the time since I left, but I'm quite well familiar with the program and the program requirements and the cycle of the program. We can help you with that. Whether or not you choose to pursue capital infrastructure funding assistance in this year, the basic template doesn't change a lot over the course of year to year. And so I think that it's an important source of capital at a very competitive interest rate that you can't get on the private market anywhere to help you move forward. And I think that a lot of what you're trying to achieve through this acquisition will be attractive to long-term SRF financing, so we can help you with that now or moving forward. It's a secondary issue for today, between now and middle of April, but it's something to keep on your, in your mind as moving forward. So with that, I'll stop. I think that, as Bob said, we've opened up good, productive lines of communication with the regulatory agencies, and we're encouraged by their response to what the town's interests are should the townspeople choose to proceed with the acquisition as you intend. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Yes, Bob. Just a couple of things I just wanted to add. I think it's important to highlight that the RFP effort that Andrew mentioned is critical, and that we're consulting with DEP to ensure that the RFP meets all their standards and expectations. So again, underscoring that we're really looking for this smooth transition. And then also just wanted to be clear that, in addition to the initial conversations that have happened with the DEP Southeast Region, we have meetings with the town manager and us to meet with the Commissioner of DEP in short order, and the Attorney General's Office. And to me, I think this highlights the importance that not only this is to the town, but that the issue of high investment and high-quality water is for these public entities. Otherwise, you wouldn't get this high level of interest and support. So I think the town is well-positioned, and I would just reiterate that the general community and service area, I believe, owes a debt of gratitude to the volunteers who have put in literally thousands of hours to get where you are today. So again, it's made our review and work a lot easier. Thanks very much.
Thank you, both of you gentlemen. Questions from my colleagues.
I'll maybe let Karen start.
Okay. Well, thanks to both of you for being here tonight. And I just might say that I think that in this transaction, like other complex transactions that this town has undertaken, you're absolutely right. We rely on very, very talented and dedicated volunteers to bring us through the process. But then I think we're also very mindful of the extent to which we then need to turn to particularized expertise. And so we did that on the financial side with Anderson Tax and Barry Dunn to make sure that, again, the considerable volume of work that our volunteers brought to that analysis was then vetted through, again, very qualified experts in those particular areas. And I think, to me, that's the process that we're following with both of you. We've spent considerable time on our own with volunteer groups. I, in particular, on the governance and transition side have done that in terms of meetings and email and phone exchanges with the folks in the Southeast Regional Office in particular, who could not have been more helpful to me as I began kind of this journey in compiling, I think, a governance proposal for our public water system. I would agree with you highlighting a couple of things. One, the long view of water. Our responsibility to our watershed is at a critical juncture, I believe, at this moment. And I think that the town is well-positioned in its planning to make the kind of investment, again, that I think we need to make for the health of our community, as well as Hall and North Cohasset. And I think that you're framing this as a public interest issue, public water system, public interest, public good, that requires not only the fiduciary obligations of the Board of Selectmen in Hangham exercising the transition rights, but in the state in making sure that safe drinking water is provided to these communities. And so to that end, I reviewed the business plan particulars that the town would need to produce in order to demonstrate capacity to the DEP. You've spoken a little bit about that. It was sort of my understanding that we may work at some juncture with the selected contract operator to continue to develop the policy requirements under the business plan. There were certain parts of that that I looked at and I thought, oh, these are clearly the town's responsibilities. But then there are other parts of that that either we would dictate that as part of the RFP process, or we would expect that a licensed operator would demonstrate those.
Right. I think that there are certain aspects of what you want. The RFP and the contract that follows, well, the RFP is really the model and the basis upon which the contract would flow. You want to be very clear about what your expectations are from your operator. And I think that you're looking for, first and foremost, the ability to run your facilities in a responsible manner, to ensure the provision of high-quality water. You obviously also want an operator who understands some of the broader interests and issues that you're dealing with, and it's someone who will partner with you on working through some of them. But the operator is the operator, the town is the owner. And one of the ways to provide an attractive environment for an operator is to provide a long enough period of time that they can settle in and make the investment in staff and provide the continuity that you want. It's also helpful to know that the town has in place, which I think you have good plans to do, the commitment to provide the resources to make sure that when you're being told, these are the things we need to do to invest in the system to make it operate, well, that you're in a position to do that. And I think utilizing SRF is an important piece of it. And you're in a very strong position as a municipality to be very competitive for that. But also, the municipal interest in managing the resources, because they are within your boundaries, and you have other police powers and regulatory powers available to you that influence what happens within the areas, land areas that impact the quality of water. It gives you a very strong hand in adopting policies and procedures and taking actions that can be focused very much on the protection of those sources for the long term. And I would say that there are plenty of privately-owned water supply utilities serving significant numbers of customers. It is a declining number over time. And the norm is, for public ownership of public water supplies, the vast majority of services, connections to homes, residences, businesses, and the like are from municipally-owned public water supplies in the state. And Massachusetts has a long track record of aggressive measures, both from DEP and from the host communities, of source protection as a primary method for assuring compliance. If you go to other parts of the country, there's just as good water at the end of the tap, but it relies much more heavily on treatment, as a general rule. And not just treatment, but perhaps oftentimes higher levels of treatment that come because the communities, host communities of water sources have not done as good a job protecting their water resources as we have. And at the end of the day, the high-quality source water protected is less expensive to deliver than source water that requires high levels of treatment. And so I think you're in a, not a unique, but in a similar position to a lot of municipalities who recognize the need to take ownership of, and I mean ownership in the broader sense, their water quality fate by having control of and the ability, therefore, to protect their water resources. That's the normal practice in the state.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of questions, and I think maybe I'd like to start just by talking in general about the DEP, because it's funny in Hangham, but 10 years ago, we started looking at our fund balance and saying, our rainy day fund was weak, and nobody had ever heard of the term "fund balance." And then we all started talking about it. Now everybody knows what "fund balance" means. In a lot of the discussion about the water system, there's been talk about the DEP. But I'd like to just take the opportunity and leverage your expertise. We've talked in general that the role of the DEP doesn't change when there's a change in ownership of a water system. So in other words, the role that the DEP plays today will be the same as the role that the DEP will play on April 23rd if town meeting supports purchasing of the water system. Could you both just give people an idea of what kind of compliance licensure? What's in place that gives us the assurance that the water that we all drink is of high quality? So what kinds of things does a water operator have to do from a compliance perspective?
You were commissioner. The, there are different, water supply operators have a whole licensure report.
Right.
And there are requirements that are reflected, both in the regulations and then passed down through the approved staffing plans, that for certain size systems, with certain treatment technologies and source requirements, that you have different people at different licensure grades doing certain tasks. So there is a whole regulatory infrastructure available that lays out very clearly who the operator can be, who the people working for the operator at different grades have to be. So he and I aren't going to go in and run a water system. But there are people who have the professional license to do that. And part of the RFP will be looking at what the nature of your system is, the size of it, the number of service connections, the combination of sources and the treatment techniques that you utilize within the system, and will match that up to tell the contract operator, these are the particular levels of expertise that you need to provide, and have certain redundancies, and the ability to slot people in.
And so the DEP is not going to let unqualified people run the system.
Correct. For the purposes of the regulatory view from DEP's perspective, they're agnostic in many respects about whether the operator is municipally-owned or privately-owned. They're all public water suppliers under the federal definition, and based on the size and class that you're in, certain requirements apply, and certain requirements that don't depend on the size, but are based on the finished water quality, there's an expectation that everybody meets those levels. And so from that perspective, to answer your question, it doesn't really matter if you're DEP, whether you're a publicly-owned public water supplier or privately-owned public water supplier. The expectations are the same. You're not allowed, you know, public agencies are not given them all again, and they don't have to have somebody onboard that meets certain classification requirements, so you're not allowed to have somebody who's not qualified running the system just because it's public. It's all the same.
And then in terms of kind of ongoing operation, what role does the DEP play in sort of monitoring water quality through the years, so that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about what if there might be a problem? What if there could be a problem? And I think, again, the role of the DEP is something that many members of the community are getting educated on through this process.
I think that there's a very robust and complete, and if you listen to some of the water suppliers sometimes, onerous sampling and reporting set requirements. So there's periodic sampling and periodic reporting that's expected. I think the track record is that across the state, regardless of the region, and regardless of the nature of the public water supplier, that in instances where there have been problems, whether there are bacteria, birds got into the water tank, and you have a bacteria problem, there's a reporting network that has resulted in very timely response to that, public notification of any issues, and quick remediation. I think that there's, you know, the general quality of water throughout the Commonwealth is high. I think the public confidence in the publicly-provided public water is quite high, and there's a good, strong regulatory backstop to ensure that happens.
And again, that's agnostic of ownership.
Totally.
Yeah. And then, you know, it sounds to me like, you know, what you're sort of saying is that in the lead-up to town meeting, the town should be, you know, my word, kind of mobilizing in the event that town meeting votes yes. And so it's... And so it's doing the notification, it's becoming familiar with the business plan, it's putting together the RFP, it's being aware of these pieces. I guess my question is, are we doing everything we're supposed to be doing right now? Is there something in the lead-up to a town meeting vote that we're doing that we're not doing, that we should be doing?
The short answer I would give is no. I think that, you know, you, you know, from what I've seen, you've been able, you've been working fairly hard at providing public opportunity for input, getting feedback, and lining things up. I think that, if anything, resisting the urge to try and do everything that you'd need to have done in the first six months after the vote, before the vote. Because I think that, you know, during the transition period prior to taking ownership, you will have time and opportunity to do a lot of these things that require the next step deep dive.
Yeah.
And I think if you're trying to do too much at once, that's unnecessary prior to, you put additional bond pressure on yourselves that I don't think you need to do. I think from what I've seen, from a process point of view, you've struck the right note.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up to that, it sounds like with respect to the RFP, the waiting until we have an affirmative town meeting vote will potentially result in more and better quality responses?
I think if you were to put out an RFP tomorrow, most of the serious players in the business would look at and say, I'm not going to put any of my resources into this until April 23rd. I don't see what that does for you, other than give you a more protracted, open period or your respondents a relatively compressed period to respond afterwards. Neither of which do you any good.
Yeah. And Andrew, you mentioned something about grants early on when you were talking about the loan program. My understanding is that there are grants that Hingham might be eligible for as a public, if we own the water company, that we're not eligible for today?
There may be some out there. You know, there are a number of communities that have taken advantage of some federal sources of money.
Okay.
That are available. And I'm not to say that, without having done more research on it, that you're expressly eligible for it. But there are a number of communities that I'm familiar with that have been able to get additional financial assistance through USDA and some other programs that tend to be size-based. So it'd, you know, have to be something we'd have to take a look at.
Okay. And just kind of one final question. Last week, I was directed to something that was, it was suggesting that there was an expert that was speaking about the fact that water systems are very risky and tricky to manage. And when I clicked on the link, it was a Chronicle show and you were on it. And we had met a few weeks before, a few weeks before that, so I recognized you. But I just wondered if you could just comment on the story. It had to do with the water supply down in Cape Cod. It talked a little bit about Eastham. But I, when I watched it, I didn't think you were saying that waters, that water systems were risky and tricky. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that.
Sure. Well, two things. One, I'm surprised how many people actually watched that show. And I'm very popular at my mother's assisted living facility. But the point that I was trying to make in my day job, running the Association Preserve of Cape Cod, is that the protection of water supplies, and, you know, and the application that we were talking about in that show, was the groundwater sources of Cape Cod. Because Cape is a sole-source aquifer, and everything that we get for rain flows through the ground, and then we pump it back out. And the point of this segment was that ensuring proper stewardship of the land around the water supplies that we rely on in the Cape is the most critical thing that we have. Because by and large, as a region, we rely on minimally-treated groundwater to service the 215,000 year-round residents, and then the million-plus that we get on any given busy weekend. And that very much of our fate, and we are no different than any other public water supply system that relies on its natural resources, the extent to which we will do well or not do well is largely dependent on how good a job we do as a group of 15 individual municipalities protecting the land that provides the recharge to the water supply sources that we rely on. So it wasn't, the point I was making had actually nothing to do with the challenges or complexities of running a water system, other than the, there is nothing more important that public water supply owners do. And in the instance of the Cape, the major communities are all serviced by municipally-owned public water systems. There's nothing that we do that's more important as a group of communities than protect the water resources that drive our property values and provide water for our kids.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Gentlemen, I was just hoping you could help me with understanding what a sole-source aquifer is.
Sure. A sole-source aquifer is, derives all the water in it from precipitation. There's no river, there's no external source other than rainwater and melting snow to recharge that system from which you then tap the water through a well.
And we've heard that our watershed has been categorized as highly stressed by the DEP. Are there gradients that the DEP applies?
Yeah, there are. It stems from the Water Management Act process that, you know, as Bob mentioned, that legislation passed in 1985 and went into effect a year or two later. I managed the program, and it's for several years. And it is a regulatory structure that's intended to protect both the interests of those who rely on withdrawals for not only public water supply, but also agricultural purposes and other business purposes. And at the same time, provide a degree of protection for the water resource itself. So what does that mean? It means basically that it's effectively against the law in Massachusetts to suck a stream dry, or to pull so much water out of the ground that the stream or the pond can't recharge and provide the natural resource values that you would expect from a healthy resource. But the law also recognized that, you know, we have several hundred years of development and water use practice and alterations of systems that have gone on in Massachusetts, and that some of the base conditions that existed in 1985 when the law passed, those water resources are already, some parts of the state are already overutilized, highly-stressed, other portions of the state less developed, perhaps blessed by a little bit more number of sources that provide recharge and rejuvenation to those systems, somewhat less stressed. And so the state has gone through a multi-decade process now of characterizing all the major watersheds and river basins within the state to characterize them as stressed, highly-stressed, or moderate. And there are different expectations about, and different standards apply to consideration of new incremental increases in water withdrawals from highly-stressed basins versus the lesser-stressed ones. So in other words, if you're in a highly-stressed basin, you need more water, it's harder, you have to do more, provide more environmental mitigation, do a better job, ensure, demonstrating that you're using the resources that you currently have as efficiently as possible before you can get permission to do additional withdrawals. So there's a gradation of expectation and regulation on the environmental side based on how stressed your water sources are.
Does the DEP look at a systems unaccountable water when considering?
Yes.
And could you just speak to that?
There are standards that DEP has through, that basically have their origin, they have the statutory authority under the Water Management Act, but they have their origin under the State Drought Management Program. And there are standards and conservation requirements. So there are standards for per-capita consumption that are incorporated into new permits. So if you are a municipal system, or anybody, coming in and looking for additional water, there are gallons per capita per day that you have to demonstrate that you're meeting or that you will meet in order to get permission to achieve, get additional water. And so if you have a leaky system, unaccountable water, I think, don't hold me to this, but I think the standard is 10%. So no more than 10% of the water that you pump has to get metered on the back end and delivered to a customer. And if you're losing more than 10%, you're not in compliance with the requirements. If your per-capita water use exceeds 5 gallons per day, you need to implement conservation measures. And there's often a nexus between leak detection and the conservation to get you down to those standards.
Would you expect the owner of a water system to acquire property around the aquifer to protect the source supply, as you spoke of?
I'd say as a general rule, there are certain minimum regulatory requirements. The area around a well, 11-acre radius around a well, is called Zone 1, typically expected to be under the control of the purveyor. And then the area that contributes water to that well during periods of drought, the so-called Zone 2, is an area that you're expected to regulate but not own and control in its entirety. I think that having public ownership of a water system allows the town often to target areas of critical importance that provides resources, that has high resource protection value. And because it's municipally-owned, it does open up some opportunities to expand the reach of some of your other financial tools to help you with that. And specifically, I'm meaning the CPC program, where you can utilize Community Preservation Act receipts to acquire open space that provides recreational or resource protection values, but also serves a dual function of providing long-term protection of the recharge capability and the filtering capability that an undisturbed landscape would provide. So that's something that, as a municipal entity, you would be able to provide that benefit to your customers without having it be based on a rates and charges basis. So it does open up some flexibility for you that a private purveyor who doesn't have access to those funds does not have.
Right. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen. Any call?
No, thanks.
At this time, it'd open up to the public. If you have a question, feel free to raise your hand, come to the podium, address yourself by name and address, address the question of the chair. Mr. O'Hara, I recognize you.
Jim O'Hara, Lebanon Heron Way, Hingham, Massachusetts. Before I ask my question, I'd like to say, Mr. Haley, I certainly appreciate your earlier comments, and I accept them unequivocally in the vein that they were offered. In reference to the 2% loans, am I correct? It is a loan. I really have a twofold question. What's the duration of that loan? And approximately, what's the average amount that these are issued in?
Okay. The, through the chair to you, the 2% loan, it depends on the size of the project. So typically, the way the SRF funds are allocated is that there's an objective scoring system. So you get the answers to the test as part of the RFP. So we're looking for projects, and we're going to score them on a competitive basis, you know, public water supplier against public water supplier. Here's where the points can be had. You can kind of self-score. So you see how your project rates, you give it, you know, it goes in, it gets a score from DEP. They put out an initial funding list that says, we got these many projects for this dollar value, we have this much money. And they draw the line around where they run out of money. So as is often the case with a lot of these projects, they phase in over a multi-year period of time. So, you know, a $25 million project, for example, is going to, you know, maybe be done over three years. And, you know, you spend $5 million the first year, and 12 the second year, and the balance the third year. The amount of money that DEP sets aside for you will match your cash flow needs for the given year. All right? And you get a short-term financing. They do a bond anticipation, short-term financing. And then when your project's done, and it's all been paid for by the loan proceeds, they go out and permanently finance your project. You can, the municipality or the borrower can work with the Clean Water Trust, which is the entity that issues the financing, on an appropriate duration for the borrowing. There are some communities that, for these types of projects, only do 10-year financing. There are some, the most typical are 20s, and there are some that stretch out to 30. Commonwealth will, when it does your financing, give you a term of financing that suits your desires as a municipality. Because they're basically bundling a whole bunch of projects into a bond offering that they use to actually draw the proceeds from the market in order to pay it. So frankly, as long as they know what the scheduled repayment is, they don't much care.
It's kind of two-faced. In essence, it's a bridge loan effect where this is a project.
There's a short-term financing that, there's a short-term financing, because what they do is, they use bond proceeds to actually permanently finance a project. So they don't issue the bond until they know what the completed project cost for every project in the pool is. They provide you that short-term financing. The short-term financing's a great deal. It's actually very close to 0%.
Yeah.
So the longer they keep you on that short-term financing, the better off you are. But, you know, they will take very large projects and finance them. It's really a function, not so much of what the project costs, but what the public health and long-term benefits of the operation of the system are that determine which projects get elevated to the funding list. Consideration of how much it is really isn't a factor until you already set the list, and then they're just managing cash flow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. What kind of projects have you seen financed?
Oh, there's everything. I mean, from, such as, you know, there's two ways to go about this. There's the drinking water supply projects themselves, filtration and treatment, corrosion control, lead abatement, you know, the full range of any, of the types of projects that you would.
Storage.
Storage improvements, sure. So those are the drinking water ones. There are a number of source protection programs, projects that you might be mitigating a source of contamination, and I mean that lightly, to the water supply, you know, nutrient impact or stormwater impact, that you could get funded on the flip side, the clean water SRF, where you're not competing with other drinking water projects, you're competing with water pollution management projects. So you can get, you can pursue both. Only public entities are eligible for the clean water SRF side. So you, as a public entity, would be able to access funds for mitigating a potential source, and I'm not suggesting you have source of contamination, though something were to arise, you would be able to potentially pursue a clean water SRF grant for that, or loan for that.
And I just think it's important to note, and folks in the room probably know, because you've been sitting through this for a long time, but we didn't build any of these assumptions into the financial modeling that we put forward. So our CapEx costs are based on, you know, are based on traditional borrowing rates, which are significantly in excess of, you know, the 2% permanent financing, and certainly significantly in excess of the bond anticipation notes pursuant to this program.
Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Good evening. John Walsh, Vice President of Operations for Aquarium Water Company. And I'm to direct my questions to you, if you would, sir. Gentlemen, Andrew, sorry, I don't remember your last name. You had some comments about the town contractors not being interested in bidding on a project before town meeting vote. I think you'd be interested in an October 18, 2018 memo from Michelle Monseigneur that summarized the conversation with the, one of the contract operators, the one which you're basing your financial model on. And so I will let you seek that email out. We received it through a public records request. But it says, he said, meaning the guy from Water and Current, said, if they put together, if they put something together in TM, Town Meeting... Meeting, voted down the acquisition, that's just part of business. It would be similar to investing time and resources into proposal for another project and losing that bid. What that tells me is at least that contractor would have been willing back in October to bid on an RFP. I don't know if you, if.
Is that a question, Mr. Walsh?
Well, I'll ask, would he change his statement regarding his opinion on whether it would make sense to do an RFP?
Do you have another question, sir?
I just asked the question, would he change his view on whether it makes sense to do an RFP before town meeting?
I think it's out of order.
Based on an individual response? Is that, is that what you're saying?
You can answer it, or he can answer it?
I just want to make sure I'm clear on what you're trying to get at. The individual response of one person?
Correct.
Do you have a response?
I wouldn't change my opinion based on what you read to me now.
All right. Next question, with a understanding that you are regulatory officials, can you give a summary of your experience being responsible for the operation of water systems, in particular water systems of this size, serving tens of thousands of people?
As an operator, I have none. However, I was a water commissioner in my town of Mashpee at a time when we were developing a water system from scratch in response to contamination from the Massachusetts Military Reservation that affected a portion of the community, and we worked on a cooperative basis with our neighboring town to both lay mains and become a customer of theirs while we developed our own sources. And over that time, we actually worked on the acquisition of the Highwood Water Company and turned that into a publicly owned entity. So as an operator, no, but as a commissioner and decision-maker in my community, I have fairly extensive experience in that regard.
Does that answer your question?
And Dr. Gollidge? Excuse me, Mr. Gollidge, sorry.
So I would answer that question in, you know, similar to Andrew in terms of, I've not operated or directly been responsible for the operation of a water system. However, in, in my various roles at DEP, particularly as the Regional Director in the Central Region, you know, the staff that, that I managed was directly responsible for the delivery of, and oversight of all the public water supplies in the region. And then as Commissioner, as you might imagine, and I guess I would really underscore this, I mean, DEP's umbrella of responsibilities is huge. That being said, I think there's nothing that gets senior management's attention more than the importance of public water supply. So again, you know, I had some sleepless nights and spent a lot of time directly involved in, when challenges occur.
Ms. Powell would like to.
I just, I'd just like to read, Mr. Gollidge and Mr. Gottlieb have given us both their biographies, and Mr. Gollidge's resume is four pages long, and I would just like to read the responsibilities that he had as Commissioner of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Managed all aspects of the agency, administrative, fiscal policy, and regulatory development, legal permitting, compliance and enforcement, municipal, federal and legislative coordination, annual budget of $100 million plus, operating $53 million, capital $21 million, federal grants, $2530 million. Mass DEP's mission and overall responsibilities include the protection of air, water, and natural resources, ensuring that all citizens and public health are protected. I think his description of his regional activities as well included many, many of those other, many of those same things.
Is there a reason the selectmen didn't bring on folks who had direct responsibility for operating a water system?
I assume that that's a rhetorical question.
No, it's not. If you don't want to answer it, that's fine with me.
It's not that we don't want to answer it, but we have decided to present this issue to the town in the way that we think will best inform the town, Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Another question, just two more.
Okay.
Mr. Gollidge, at the beginning of your discussion, you talked about planning documents that you reviewed and talked about some of the long-term planning challenges. I'm curious, what planning documents that the town developed did you review?
I'm, I'm not here to give you a recitation of all the documents that I've received, but I think that the one thing that, that really impressed me was the in-depth analysis that, that the, the financial folks did in terms of trying to evaluate the, the financial benefits over time, and also explaining how the town would invest some of those savings into the greater protection of the infrastructure.
Andrew, again, I'm, excuse me, what is your last?
Gottlieb.
Gottlieb. Mr. Gottlieb, you talked about the SRF funds, and obviously, you're very familiar with SRF funds. In my experience consulting for municipalities, there is a lot of competition for SRF funds, meaning that you have to have some pretty serious problems in a system to receive those funds. Would you agree that there's a lot of competition for those funds?
Yes.
And are there many utilities that apply even multiple years that do not get those funds because they do not have serious enough problems in the system?
There are a number of municipalities and privately-owned utilities that don't get enough points to make the funding list.
Is there anything that you can see in the, the water system here that you would say would give it lots of points to make it eligible for SRF funds?
I would want to have a conversation with the operators to determine what the long-term needs are and what projects you'd put forward. You know, I raise it not as a promise, but as a potential funding source that the proposal's not predicated on, to the extent that it were to happen, and we'd encourage the town to pursue it, to see what their projects, where they rank, that it's all potential upside and savings to the ratepayers. Not, there's no reason not to evaluate.
I think it'd be valuable, presumably this and planning documents, I think it'd be valuable for you to look at that and then opine on it for the community, whether or not the community really would be, have a chance at any SRF funds. My final question is for you. What percentage of water systems in the state meet the 10 percent, and the 10 percent goal, as I understand it, is 10 percent or making progress toward it? Correct me if I'm wrong on that. But what percentage of them meet the 10 percent?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Do you know what the average is for the state for public water systems?
I'm going to guess it's probably somewhere in the 15 to 20 percent range.
For unaccounted for water?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Good seeing you, Mr. Walsh. Seems like it's a nightly event. Anybody else with any questions before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Joe Connor, representing Aquarian again. Just a couple more questions. Andrew, if I just, Mr. Chairman, ask a question.
Here.
All right. My understanding is that, in your, from what you've stated, that you've been working on this for a couple of months now, and have verified that the town has no business plan, correct?
Carrie?
Yeah.
You know, I'd rather have our attorney respond to you.
I'm not asking Mr. Ryan anything, I'm asking your consultant.
You're asking me?
I'm asking you to ask the consultant.
Sure. And I feel more comfortable with having Mr. Ryan address you, Mr. Connor, as the lawyer for the Aquarian Watering Company.
Well, is there a rule that I cannot ask a question?
You are asking.
Okay. Well, Carrie, do you want to answer the question?
What was it?
Want you to restate it, Mr. Connor?
Sure. I just wanted to verify that the town has no business plan to submit to the DEP at this time. Is that correct?
Sounds like one of those cross-examination questions. First of all, let's just get the introductions. I know Mr. Connor introduced himself as for Aquarian. I guess it would be.
I am with Baker Donaldson, working with Nixon Peabody, representing Aquarian.
Right. So.
Where are Speaker Donaldson from?
Baker Donaldson, we're a national firm.
Out of where?
I'm out of Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Okay.
I love your community. Been here many times.
Been to Lookout Mountain, too. It's nice.
Well, good. Have you been to the aquarium since we've?
Nope.
Made it into both freshwater and saltwater?
Nope.
How'd you like the water?
Didn't drink it.
It's private land.
Say I didn't drink it.
So you drink bottled water?
I do.
I know there's a question coming.
Well, I mean, I. It sounded like your question was, is there a current business plan?
Yes, that's a question.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can speak to that. You know, I, I've been, I've been working on developing that plan, so, and now with the engagement of the consultants, we will continue that effort. That's what we're doing. We are trans, we are preparing for transition.
Is there a plan that you provided the consultant to review at this point?
I am working on the business plan.
So you haven't prepared a plan?
I have consulted and worked with the consultants over the last couple of weeks on this matter.
And the DEP.
And the DEP.
Okay. Next question.
Isn't it true that you intend to use and recommend using Aquarian's business plans and all of the programs that they have submitted to the DEP upon acquisition?
I already said that.
That's what I'm saying. But I wanted to clarify that it's Aquarian's plans that you're attempting, that you're suggesting that the town contended to you.
And I also, to complete the thought, said that the town would be in a position, and DEP recognizes that it may appropriately want to make changes in those plans during or after the transition period, and has their liberty to do so.
From your review of those plans, did you see anything that needed to be changed?
You know what? I'm not in a, at this point, in a position to comment on behalf of the town on whether they see their interests being best served by changes to the plan or not. That's not my judgment to make for them, and they haven't asked me that question yet.
How many RFPs that you've drafted for takeover of Operation of a Water Company?
I was involved in the one that we did in Mashpee many, many, many years ago.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
What about you, Bob?
Directly, no.
How many have you done?
I've actually been participated in four. Where operators were hired.
In the Commonwealth?
Excuse me?
In the Commonwealth?
Not in the Commonwealth, no.
Thanks.
Last question, Hank. Were you aware of Aquarian's record at the DEP while you were there?
With respect to what?
Satisfying their permit requirements, providing the business plans that were necessary? Any issues with, with Aquarian?
While I was there, I believe this water company was owned by the Mass American Water Company.
Are, from your review, since you've been a consultant for the town, have you seen any problems at the DEP with respect to Aquarian's operation?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Last question, Mr. Connor.
Is it your understanding that the water quality that's being provided by, and quantity provided by Aquarian is, meets all requirements?
As far as I know.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Nice seeing you. You, too. All right. Anybody else? All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you all for coming. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Your input, Mr. Gott. We'll continue this conversation, but not tonight. We're going to move on to something.
I'll be back tomorrow.
Discussion with the Hingham Maritime Center regarding. Well, why don't we proceed a pace? It's almost 8:30. So what do we have?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So since our last meeting with you, we have reviewed with the board and reviewed with the town, boards within the town, our plans for the boathouse, which we'd like to share with you. We have looked to scale back the size of the boathouse in response to concerns about the number of variances that our, our initial design would have required, and feel like what we have currently being able to show you have reduced the number of variances we'd be looking for. We have shared, I think both, this document's been shared with them.
They have, yeah.
An analysis that we've looked at the, the variances we've been looking for and what would pertain to the building on the site. With the new plans we've shown, I mean, it's an exercise, it's a concept massing design, so there's not a lot of fine architecture applied to the, to the look of it so far, but it's an exercise in making sure that the concept can proceed. Yep. So that we can then move forward and be efficient with our, our funds as we do so. So with the new plan, we would reduce, reduce the variance that we would need for the side yard setback. We would be looking to have a 20-foot setback to the east on these plans, which is in alignment with the current setback of the current boathouse. So it would be continuing an existing setback. The area coverage would be reduced with this plan to 13 percent, which, down from 15 or 16 percent from the previous design, but still over the maximum area coverage of 10 percent. The height of the building would be reduced to 28 feet, which would be in alignment with what is allowed on the site. Side walls or that wall height would be 20. We would be, by having a second floor, we would be sort of inhabiting the space above 20 feet, which, that's a piece of, but it would really be kind of the area you're breathing above, so it's sort of, there's an open high roof line. So we wouldn't be really existing within that space, it just would be open to the air, the space above 20 feet. And then with parking, we would need to continue working with the planning board on parking plans, because, so that's what we've done. On the plans, we've shown that we are, there's sort of three requirements in the lease on the public restrooms, on the ground level. There's a team room, which would be really used, be able to be used by the teams, but also by the Maritime Center. And then a sort of storage space that would be lockable on the second floor for bags and other, any valuables that kids have as they come to the site.
Tom, help me out here.
We're looking at this, at this point in time, with respect to some kind of scheduled timetable that Maritime Center has to satisfy in order to continue moving forward.
That's right.
And we need your approval on this concept in order to have any meaningful conversations with zoning and planning.
Second floor?
Yep.
You don't really expect us to do an in-depth analysis of the
No.
You want to.
You want to.
You want to.
I don't have that hat on.
You want me with those plans. You know, back in, back in December, when, what I would say is that we asked you to come back in three months, and we asked you to take a look at, you know, what, what could be done. And it's obvious to me that a lot of time and thought has been put into this, and you've used the last couple of months really well. So I just want to start out by saying thank you for that, and thank you for listening to what we had to say. Let me just ask you a couple of questions, because I'm not as, as good as my colleague to the left at reading these plans. But, you know, you've had to make some hard choices here, right? Because the structure is smaller. In terms of your implementing your program, sort of what, you know, kind of high level here? What's, what's a little bit different? What was, what were some of the things that maybe aren't here that were in the bigger version? How, how does HMC feel about moving forward with this conceptual plan? You know, you had to make some hard choices, and I'm just curious at how that came to be.
It's definitely part of what we work through is, you know, what, what to subtract from the program. But definitely feel comfortable as a board with what we've come up with. A big piece of what we're losing is some boat storage.
Okay.
But it, the building, this building accommodates the boats we have and the boats that the high school has. Doesn't really leave for, room for expansion of that, but accommodates what is, we have between the two programs.
And I also noticed that some of it, because I know in past conversations, there was talk about storing things during the winter, and I see that there are references in here to the need to maybe store some things elsewhere in the town. You know, I think, to me, I think using waterfront space for storage in some ways is kind of a missed opportunity. And, you know, I think, I hope you feel like the town has made efforts to work with HMC to find places to store your assets in a place where they're safe and where they're kept out of, out of the, you know, the elements. And that, you know, we would, I don't, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue to try to do that for you.
And a piece of that certainly in the, you know, if in the wintertime, we could have the boats somewhere else, it allows us to use that, that space for
Other stuff.
You know, the high school team can come, or we can offer both our middle school programs and high school programs.
You know, to me, the more, the more that space is utilized by people, I would put, I would put use by people over storage of assets.
Right. And, you know, during the summertime, boats will be in and out. I also see this space as easily a space where the sailing kids could meet up if someone else is in the maritime space, you know? There's, there's...
Yep. And then, and I don't know, this is probably like a Nancy Susan question, but, you know, as you referred to Nancy, as, as we went through the negotiations on the lease, there were a number of different things that, that we collectively agreed on with respect to hosting the high school programs. And I'm just questioning, does, does this conceptual design meet those things we talked about? Or are there, is there anything on that that we have to talk about?
I, I think we continue to meet the high school, both sailing and rowing teams' inability to, to host them.
Susan Murphy, Special Real Estate Counsel. As, I think as Nancy commented at near the end of her presentation, there were certain specific features of the building that the Board of Selectmen wanted to have built into the building
Right.
in order to help accommodate. So for example, the public restrooms.
Right.
There was, you know, concern if, if the students have to go right there right from school, they have their backpacks, whatever, instruments, other valuables, and they're kind of not really a great place for them to leave them. So a storage area, a place to meet, and as Nancy indicated, those items are all shown on the current floor plans that were submitted.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then to sort of finish, a little bit of a way to accommodate a smaller building is that you make each room a little bit smaller.
Sure.
So I think we're still achieving a lot of what we've had. We still have, you know, offices and meeting rooms that will work for everybody. Some of them are a little bit smaller, but it all still will work to accommodate our program.
And just, you know, as the board has discussed in things, will this, if, you know, again, and this has to go through permitting, so we all know that, you know, that process has to play out. But if, is the board excited about what's here?
Yes.
Feeling good about the ability to, you know, garner community support? And I, you know, I know there are a lot of pieces to this, including a fundraising piece, but, you know, do you, do you have any concerns moving, if, if this concept continues to move forward?
About the design of it? No.
I would just, if I may, there was one other element, just kind of sticking through what was part of the review for the selectmen under the lease provisions. One of them was kind of the exterior appearance and the, like, materials and finishes. I don't, I think the selectmen may have them, I don't know if you have it.
Right. So for, and the original packet, the renderings we had had done showed sort of a shingle-style building with, you know, windows with mullions and appropriate details for a waterfront building.
Are you in the historic district there or no?
No. But that concept would continue to be what we're looking for there.
Don't get me started.
Well, it's very attractive.
I would just say thank you for, thank you for the hard work on this. And, you know, if you think about the zoning in the town, the zoning is something that town, town meeting essentially over the years has said, this is how we want our town to look. So this is how high we want buildings, this is how far back they should be set from the street. I mean, all those decisions, and it's a two-thirds voted town meeting, so it's a high bar. And, and those are decisions that once those bylaws are set, we all have to follow through. And, you know, especially with the waterfront, it's, it's, everybody has very strong opinions about the waterfront, not always the same. But I think as, as we're looking at that, we have to be mindful that, you know, the zone, in many ways, because town meeting, town meeting decides the zoning. So, you know, we can sort of say, well, you know, I don't, I don't like that part of the zoning, or I wish that part wasn't there, but it kind of is. And, and so in situations like this, we got to work together to figure out what might be acceptable. And I would just ask that as you, as you've worked through with the permitting boards, that, you know, you understand that part of their job is to, is to make sure that that those, that, you know, to the extent that there are variances and things like that, that's, they've got a tough job to do. And I think they want to try to work with every applicant, but also kind of maintain the integrity of the zoning in the town. And I would just ask, as it moves forward, to be aware that there are a lot of really strong feelings about what's done on the waterfront. And, and our waterfront is pretty open. So anytime you have a structure that's of a mass that kind of blocks the view that there is, that's sometimes things that people, people react to, so...
Certainly as we do some renderings going forward, we'll try to do some from places where, you know, people, to show how it would block or not block the views, so.
I'd just like to say that after having worked with the high school team and now HMC, I think this facility will provide us with both organizations with homes they haven't had. And that causes lots of problems today in terms of just scheduling and arrival times and things. You know, the boat bay in the winter will be a great place to practice. And upstairs, like Nancy said, for middle school and youth programs, you know, will really allow us to expand our winter programming and, you know, keep everyone on the wharf and continue to serve the community well.
That's good to hear. Yeah, so, you know, I guess, you may have already covered this, apologies, I had to step into the hall, but, you know, the lease requires that you deliver conceptual plans to us, and that we either approve or disprove, and we go through a kind of back-and-forth process. And then, you know, particularly in discussions, discussions with Ms. Murphy today, it gets to a point where this isn't the board with the expertise to continue to refine the elements of design that are necessary to, you know, to come to a conceptual phase for permitting, right? And so, you know, to me, as you've alluded to, really needs to go to the second floor, that's where the experts are on this. I just want to be clear, and the lease is very clear on it, that once, once we advance this, we're, our approval is simply the advancement to the process. So like Mary said, the rules are the rules, the second floor folks are the experts on the rules. And so, you know, essentially nothing we say, they're not, they're not going to care. And they shouldn't. They have their job to do, and they do it well. So I just want to be clear with everybody that while we're advancing this, potentially advancing this project into the permitting process, that's what our vote means. And the, and the lease, again, it says, "In no event shall the landlords review and approval of the conceptual plans be determined, be a determination of compliance with zoning, including sufficiency of parking, the state of the building code, or any other federal, state, or local building or land use laws or regulations nor shall the landlord be responsible or liable therefore." So, you know, otherwise, I, I'd feel uncomfortable, because I would feel, you know, ill-equipped to opine on any of this stuff. But I do think the hard work that you've done to refine the design, to me, signals, signals to me that you're ready to take the next step to work hard with the folks on the second floor to, to move forward with, with this project. The other thing that the lease points out is, as you suggested, there are certain minimum things you had to have in the design. And then it says to us, if there's any other aspect of the plan that we feel that is important, as it's reflected here, it can't be modified without our prior consent. I, you know, to me, the important things were spelled out in the lease, but I just didn't know, Susan, if there was, you know, anything you saw in the design or any other advice you might give us in terms of, you know, is there anything here that we should make sure doesn't change as it goes through that process? And if it were to change, is it, is there anything that you might suggest come back here, other than, other than those items enumerated in the, in the lease?
I don't recall, and Tom and I sat through all the same meetings for the lease negotiation and even everything since, I don't recall that there was anything else specific about the actual programming for the building that jumped out in any of the discussions. And Tom, I don't know if you have anything else, or Mary was there for some of those meetings.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I think, I think since the time that the lease was executed, the cooperation of all of the interested parties with Maritime Sports is just been really tremendous, so I...
And so, and maybe I'll, I'll take these kind of questions offline, but, you know, now that we move to this next phase of the process, there's a timeline during which you're supposed to obtain permitting approvals. You know, I think we're still under the extension of Phase One with respect to the town's obligation to provide wharf improvements, sewer improvements, and also your fundraising. And to me, and I don't mean to speak for you here, but to me, this, this kind of next step would be important to your ability to fundraise. It strikes me. Because now you have potentially some concept, or will have a refined concept with the, with the help of the folks on the second floor, that you can then demonstrate this is, this is what we're fundraising for. And I think, to me, we've all been a little bit stuck, right, in that, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a product.
I, I'd just say on the timing, as Karen mentioned, you know, it is broken down in phases, because everyone recognized at the beginning that there's a lot of different steps related to wharf work. And as it turns out, we had a good result with the MWRA, we don't need to get special approvals for the sewers. So that was
Good work on that.
great outcome for the town. So we're currently in the Phase One term under, for a couple of different reasons, but the, the requirement to have the approvals to actually build the entire facility, including the infrastructure, bringing utilities, all that, actually run, you know, is not till the end of the Phase Two term. You know, that's not to say they couldn't kind of get ahead of the schedule. I would just note that special permits and variances and all types of permits have shelf lives on them, that if they're not exercised, that they expire. And so I do think that, and this is something I'm sure Tom can coordinate with Hingham Maritime on, that trying to line up when they do the permitting versus when they might actually be able to exercise that by the start of the work, which might be tied to the wharf. Like, I think there's a few different departments with the engineering department and Tom and Hingham Maritime to try to line everything up to make sure that they don't go through all the permitting only to find then that a variance expired and they have to start it over, right? So, yeah, so, I mean, I think that that's going to be continued discussion, cooperation, communication
Yeah, and I guess
to line everything up.
And I guess all I've been saying right along is we've written a bunch of stuff down. So, to the extent we're not going to follow it, let's address it and move on. You know, this eight point five speaks to prompt, prompt participation in the permitting process. And if, but to your point, it doesn't make any sense to do that if that's going to result in stale, stale permits. So all I'm saying is, you know, we spent a lot of time, you spent a lot of time writing this down in detail. And to the extent that we're going to change our plans, I'm, I'm all for reasonable accommodation of that. But I don't want to keep coming back to a document that doesn't speak to the process.
Right. And, and we've identified in connection also with the dock project that may happen with the Seaport Grant, we have a running list going of aspects of the lease where it, it's just like you said, it's like there's kind of slight, kind of tweaks on what, you know, because no one could anticipate in December of two thousand, when was it? Seventeen? You know, everyone did the best of trying to anticipate, but you can't anticipate every twist and turn. And I do think at a certain point, it, it will make sense to get back together and say, okay, now based on where we are, how do we you know, put it in writing
Right.
to just document
Right.
that this, this date adjusted, or, you know, this, you know, those types of things, and just have it all written down. I agree with you.
Okay.
Great. I, I mean, I think it's just a matter of scheduling issue, too, of when it might make sense to do that. I think there's supposed to be another kind of check-in, look-back meeting later this year. That might be a good time, like sometime, you know?
It's three months before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think there's, there's another one. We have to, I'll talk to Tom about when the different meetings try
I think we're constantly looking back.
So that's another thing, there's various meetings discussed, so we can, you know, the board can consider trying to line things up, so you don't have multiple meetings every year. Like, there's different things that can just make it operate more smoothly and efficiently.
I would be all for that. I'd be all for that, because I think you're right. We, we're at a point now where, where we have more information than we had, and we might as well let that information inform what the process and the requirements for the process should be going forward.
Right. I agree.
And I'd like to say that we're, I'm personally very excited to move this forward as quickly as we can, given, you know, all of our roadblocks. And we definitely want to talk to you about, you know, writing down our mutual understanding of what we need to get done.
Well, and to your point, right, like, it comes back to the program and to the participants in the program and the people on the wharf. And that's, we are, we're, we are trying cooperatively to bring that product to fruition. And, you know, I think the high school in particular runs a fantastic program that attracts, you know, a wide array of students. And, you know, to have a facility that is in keeping with the standards and the expectations we have of our athletes is, I think, our goal. And, you know, in addition to that, you know, our community rowers and sailors, same thing, you know? We're a waterfront community, this is part of what we do. So, you know, I'm excited for you to move this So, you know, I'm excited for you to move this forward as well. And again, appreciate, you know, I appreciate, as Mary suggested, the time that you put into kind of carving down the box to something that, you know, I think hopefully we can move forward.
I, I would just like to note one, one more aspect because of, in proposed language that I worked on with Tom for, for the vote, for the board, is there's a concept in Section 8.5 that material changes to the concept plans have to come back to the board. So, we do know that because there are still some variant, based on the current plans, certain variances may be necessary, you know, the parking really needs to get dug into more detailed, kind of on the second floor level, et cetera, that there are certain changes that, you know, may be or likely to be needed in order to kind of get in compliance with zoning, in order to qualify for relief. So, what we're recommending is a concept that if they're making changes that are necessary to bring it into greater compliance with zoning, that those changes would not be considered material changes, that would be required to come back to the board, but that Tom would be kept in the loop on those. So, that's something we're proposing to the board, if you feel that that's reasonable, so that if they need to, you know, I don't know, shrink something here or there, or move something around, that every single one of those changes, we don't, you don't have to make a decision at the board level, is that material, do we need to re-review it? So, if, I don't know if you're.
I, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, yeah, I think it goes, well, I'm comfortable with it because I think it goes back to the level of expertise. If, if it's in keeping with the, the bylaw zoning requirements, you know, to Barry's point, the, the town has spoken to those expectations. So, I, I, I would agree with that.
Right. And then if Tom's kept in the loop, if he starts seeing changes that he thinks, well, wait a minute, this is kind of going far astray, he could say, wait a minute, I think this is a material change. And he could say that it needs to come back. So, it would kind of, you know, you'd have to rely on Tom, but.
Well, but Michelle's there too.
Yeah, Michelle's there too. Let's not cut off.
Tom might be at the circus.
Yeah, true. No, there's no elephants.
This is a nonstarter. I, I think, to me, that, you know, a, a thing that would trigger kind of coming back to the board is if, if there's an aspect of something relative to like the high school sports programs, that it looks like, you know, we're, we're at like sort of an impasse or have to make a choice. You know, that, that to me would be something that, that we would want to engage in, but, you know, the, the permitting, the design, all that, you know, that, that expertise really does reside on the second floor.
No concept comes out the way it went in. Just saying.
True.
We've got to know that upfront, going in.
Yep.
Public comment. Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
All right, so Paul, there's a vote.
See it.
Okay, there's one correction in the main portion of the vote, that the, it should be dated April 2nd, 2019.
As opposed to March 21?
No, right now it just says March 20, no, up in the, in the second line.
Mine says April 2nd.
Oh, did you fix it already? Oh, never mind. Michelle is way.
Michelle was there.
Okay.
How do you know I didn't do it?
Again.
Do you want the motion?
Please.
Okay, I'll make a motion. The board hereby approves the conceptual plans entitled "Hangham Maritime Center Boathouse" dated April 2nd, 2019 pursuant to Section 8.4 of the lease between the town and Hangham Maritime Center, subject to the following conditions. One, in no way shall the Board of Selectmen's review and approval of the conceptual plans be a determination of compliance with zoning, including sufficiency of parking, the state building code, or any other federal, state, or local building or land use laws or regulations, nor shall the town be responsible or liable therefore. Two, the exterior materials and finishes for the building shall be consistent with those set forth in the original concept design dated March 21st, 2018, prepared by Peterson Architects for Hangham Maritime Center. And three, Hangham Maritime Center may modify the conceptual plans as necessary to achieve compliance with and/or obtain relief from the zoning bylaw and other applicable bylaws and regulations without further review of the Board of Selectmen, provided that A, the building complies with minimum specifications of the second paragraph of Section 8.4 of the lease, by including public access restrooms, a team room, and secure lockers, or other storage areas for the HHS teams during practices and competitions. And B, all modifications to the conceptual plans are submitted to the town administrator simultaneously with submission to the applicable permitting boards.
Second.
Public discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Excellent.
Thank you for your great work.
On to the second clue.
Yes.
Looking forward to it.
Good luck up there.
All right, good luck down there.
Thank you.
Beautiful. I was burned high. Okay, let's keep moving.
Yes.
Special one-day, Michelle and Tom, are the liquor licenses in compliance with the...
Yes.
Have we had a conversation with the community center?
Yes.
About the number of licenses? Yes. They're on, they're actually right on track, a little bit less than what they did last year, believe it or not.
And the chief, the chief is talking to them too. Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Ellen Bernstein, on behalf of the Congregation Shurah Shalom for Dancing Under the Stars, to be held at Congregation Shurah Shalom on Saturday, April 27th, 2019, from 7:30 PM to 11:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Mary and Blackmore, on behalf of the Hangham Community Center, for craft beer tasting to be held at the Hangham Community Center on Friday, April 26th, 2019, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want these proclamations, Brett, or I'll be, Tony?
I think you can vote them as presented to the board.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to proclaim April 22nd, 2019, to be Earth Day in Hangham.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to proclaim April 26th, 2019, to be Arbor Day in Hangham.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have once again reached the end of another successful meeting. One and all, we're working on making this a success. As we customarily do, we'll do reports. Michelle, anything you'd like to say?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the event celebrating Hangham's designation as a green community will take place next Tuesday at 9:30 in the morning downstairs in the central meeting room. Thank you.
Thomas?
Michelle does all the work, as we've determined. No, I have no reports tonight. Thank you.
I'm all set.
I just want to mention that, and I would like to give, I'd like to give, first of all, a shout-out to Harbor Media. And, you know, there are a lot of folks who work really hard to bring government into everybody's living rooms. And, you know, I just think that's so important. And in particular, over the last few months, the Harbor Media has been televising and recording all of the, all of the public meetings related to the potential acquisition of the water company. And that just takes an awful lot of work, and it means sometimes setting up rooms that aren't, aren't wired the way, for example, this room is. And I, I just want to say thank you. But also, I would just point out that a couple of weeks ago, all of us here behind the table had the opportunity to be interviewed by Harbor Media, by Joe Collimore, for what they call close-ups. And so, John Asher and Ed Siegfried from the Water Acquisition Study Committee have a close-up interview where they talk about the water acquisition study. So, for those of you that want to learn a little bit more about that, it's about a 20-minute interview. Mr. Collimore interviewed Town Administrator Tom Mayo and Selectman Healy about different aspects related to operations, what we talked about tonight, preservation of, of the land in the watershed. He interviewed Karen, talking about governance. He interviewed me, talking about the rationale for the feasibility study, bond ratings, all kinds of other things. Each of these lasts about 20 minutes, and they are, they are looping on H-CAM, so.
So, they're out there?
They are, they are out there.
I know what I'm watching when I go home.
Available on YouTube for those who, who, who would find. And I would just also add that this Saturday, April 6th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, the board will be holding a second public information meeting on article, on the articles related to the water company acquisition. That meeting's going to take place at the Hangham Middle School. It will be a presentation by the town, and then the opportunity for questions. We had probably, we had over 150 people at our first meeting. It was very informative, it was constructive, and I would invite everybody who's interested in learning and asking questions to join us on Saturday at the middle school.
Ladies and gentlemen, you, you continue to hear us talking a lot about the water company, but I can't help but be struck by what Mr. Gottlieb said tonight, when he talked about the importance of protecting the source supply of the aquifer. And that is something that this town has been doing instinctively for years. And it, it gave me a great deal of satisfaction to hear that, because we know instinctively what to do here. We know deliberately what we're proposing to do. So, I, I ask you to, to consider, you know, not just what we're saying, but what we've done. And in juxtaposition, you, you can look at what has been done by the operator of the water source presently. I think the comparison is stark. Couple of things I want to speak to. Sergeant Dave Hoard is retiring. His last day is tomorrow. I'm going to try and make it to the change of shifts, to wish him well. He started as a rookie when I was a sergeant on the midnight to eight, and I've always enjoyed working with Dave. He was very helpful, and he served as the liaison to the traffic committee, especially with the main and cushion intersection issue. And finally, on a, on a note of congratulation to Commander John Beal. He is the son of Robert and Brenda Beal. He has recently been given command of a cutter, a newly commissioned cutter, I think, I want to say the honor, named after a Coast Guardsman who was murdered doing interdiction work. He is a graduate of Hangham High School, the Coast Guard Academy. I think he's a credit to his family and his community. Congratulations, Captain Beal. I think you get that title if you're in command of a ship. But, you know, I was very, very pleased to see that, so, out of the way, boy, nice job. On that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.